Jeremy Ragland.
Present.
Mary Jean Crager. Mitch Magnus.
Present.
Larry Phillips.
Present.
Liz Darden.
Present.
Reed Petty.
Present.
Joel Williams.
Present.
And Wayne Coe.
Present.
You have it for him.
All right, thank you. Wayne, would you pray for us, please?
I will do it. Will you please stand? Our most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you and that thanking you for this beautiful day that you've given us the beautiful weather that we've had today. Lord, we thank you for those who are in attendance here tonight. We just ask us, should we go forth with this meeting? That you guide and direct us on the decisions that need to be made for the citizens of Harrison. Go with us. Guide and direct us all the way through the meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I join you in pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, be seated, please. Counsel, I would like to request two items be added to the agenda tonight. One being the committee reports and the other being the approval of the minutes from August twenty second.
And that's the department head reports.
Right, department head reports. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We will, we will get to do something else a little different. I think we have a video we want to share with you all. And the reason we're sharing it in the beginning, a lot of times when we get down to the end, there's not a lot of people here. So we don't want you to leave without seeing this. James? Yeah, thank you for watching that. We open Creekside two weeks from Saturday. It's been a long time in the makings. We hope you love it as much as we do. With that said, I'd like a motion to pass the minutes of August twenty second.
So move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Let's go into department head reports. We'll start with Chuck Edington.
I'm ready to go now after the video. That's good. I usually go at the end, but not if you guys have the video. But besides Creekside, we got lots of things going on right now. We got men's league softball, coed ragball going on. We got our soccer leagues at the soccer complex, flag football, and we got jumpstart basketball being played on all of our facilities right now for leagues. And then we're going to talk a little bit about Creekside. We're doing our membership drive. As you saw, memberships are open now. I think we're a little, little over fifty this afternoon. When I left, already signed up with memberships. October seventh, we're doing a training night for all the sponsors that gave sponsors and Creekside. All their employees and families come up to help train our staff. And then on the eighth, we're doing a city employee family night where they can all come up and train the other half of our staff. So everybody's trained before our grand opening. So like I said, a lot of people's asking me how many people I think we're going to hire through Creekside for the full year. And what we estimated is between eighty and eighty-five jobs that we'll have available just with Creekside open. So we're very excited about those opportunities for people in the city. October twelfth, the grand opening, it'll be at ten AM till nine PM. And then after that, we're open from six AM to nine PM every day except for city holidays. So we're very excited and the staff and team is really excited. We're two weeks away. So we're ramped up and we've been doing tours. I think I've done twenty tours in the last three weeks throughout the facility and had all great feedback. Like I said, that video showed you how the kids are going to respond, but the adults are responding well too, because we tried to do something for every age. So it's a, it's a big deal. Hope it's great for the county and the surrounding area. But that's what we've been focused on, parks. If you have any other questions.
The school, they're excited, elementary and for the parents that received free and reduced months to get all of their free memberships. So we're responsible there.
Thank you.
All right, Chuck, thank you. Chief Grady?
Well, I'm happy to hear that. If y'all have any questions, I would be happy to answer them. I would be glad if not. One thing I did want to add is we actually hired your man. I built one of our biggest spots, you know, and go to the academy and we scheduled to go in January until that time, it's going to be like still running off the program, which probably didn't have any revenue, so I still have to go to that. So we have another one coming in hopefully next week. So that being said, maybe we can get one too hard and then we can down one. That's, that's been something we've been working on for a while. Last week, we had our tactical range. If we have range in the, in the spray, we go out and do standardized course. It's this word, we try to implement real life situation. Coming out of cars, having actually shoot through windshield, having to take other things like that, stuff that's realistic. And we, we spent four days last week out there. I say, I follow the shark and did a lot of, now we're swift, real well. So we try to get that down. And that's all I have. Any questions?
On the last page of the report, the narcotics report. You look at the, you list the value of the weight and value, the number of pills and all that, the ninety-seven thousand nine hundred dollars for values drugs. But do you have any where that you record the, the money that saved?
We receive that straight to the prosecution attorney's office.
Okay.
Third round of my statute to receive any, see any forfeiture property and we do not take it.
Okay. So it, it's given to the prosecutor, then where does the money go after that?
He, the jury's cut out amongst the agencies and for two years for this. But and when he got well, he's been very tight to us and helping us pay a lot of purchases in the last five and a half years.
All right, chief.
Thank y'all.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Wade?
There's something that I have a few items. The Arby Intersectors project, I've talked to y'all about it a few times over the last really couple of years. They are officially scheduled to open bid on that in November. So that's really good to hear. That does include the three intersections. One will be Air Force One sixty-five with the new traffic signal going up there. This place with an upgrade, the signals at Walmart garage and sixty-five as well as Hester and sixty-five. And included in the tester project is a realignment of horse where we'll have a four-way intersection. They're adding the light to help, help a lot with some traffic flow, especially getting from bunker across sixty-five and vice versa. Just to refresh you, when we first started down the road on this project with, with R and R, this is one where we are part of, we're raising the cost of the costs of that harness portion. We're currently estimating that was about seven hundred and thirty thousand, either one or after two, and we have the big ten members, nobody else, you know. I'll bring that report back to the council. Also, I put out a inventory receipts, a hard copy of the paid assessment report that you receive. We're working with, depending also with our software that we use for tracking all of this updated. So next month, I'll give you a, a pretty decent overview of what the report detail. And then also, once we know what our costs will be on the harness realignment, and that will allow me to kind of take a look and come up with our payment protocol for the line, depending on how much that harness project is, will dictate kind of what we put into that plan. Feel free to review that if you have any questions until now. If you have any next month, don't hesitate to reach out. Some of it's very interesting. Some of it's pretty dry and a lot of tables and nothing else to say. But it's good information that we'll be able to use in like several areas as we make some decisions on what we're going to work on our payment preservation. The Main Street beautification project is moving on nice. The lights are up. I think we're don't have the power yet. I don't think the Entergy's actually got us full power to it yet. Hopefully we can get that pretty quick. We're getting into planting season, so I do hope to see pretty quick next month, some, some planting, start building the street trees and stuff like that. Planting Commission this month, we had a few approvals. The Dollar General, the DG Market on South Tyne was approved. So we'll be seeing that project moving forward. We also a rezone for a lot at Sawgrass Point out there by Dr. Kilbo's office next to the country club. There was a rezone from C two to C three that was approved by Planting Commission. So I'll be getting that ordinance put together and we'll be presenting that to you next month from the council side. That is for, actually, it's for a golf cart dealership and repair and customization place. We are going to advertise for a graphic single technician. This will be sort of replacing an old position that we've not filled for a little bit in the street department. Kind of a move as these signals are upgraded and that we're working on and we move into some better technology, we're going to get somebody in place that's got a little bit more experience than some of my people I have right now as far as working on these. So we'll be going through that process over the next month or two, trying to find the right person to fill that position. I did, it was a few months ago, I talked about several of our people in water sewer that had gotten their passport water operator's license. We've got a couple more, so I wanted to mention their names. Nathan Case and Stacy Raxdale. So again, this is the highest level of an operator's license for water. I'm going to file them. Harrison historically in the past has not put a lot of emphasis on these people getting to that highest level. Probably our current water operations manager, he's been willing to work with me and help encourage these people to keep doing that. So we've got them, them going up. Nathan Case and Stacy Raxdale. So hopefully we'll get more as we, as we have some of these younger people that we've hired on. You know, get their trains upgraded, which is really good as far as the people that are out there maintaining that water system, the knowledge and expertise we get are valuable. And then finally, I do want to just kind of put a couple of dates out there. The sea ride her side cleanup will start, will be the week of October fourteenth. The days that they'll be picking up at, at city residents. Houses will be the same day as your trash day. And Donna will be continuing to put some info out on social media, help push that out so people know what they can and can't put out. But just kind of mark the calendars for October fourteenth. Also, county will be doing their fall cleanup on October twentieth, which is a drop-off event in that method of sanitation. And that's open to all county residents. So just wanted to get those dates out so people have. I would, I think I'll, we won't do anything else unless you get any questions. Yes, sir.
Two questions. One, the date, anticipated completion date for the bridge across Main Street over South of town?
R and R has not given any change to the original plan, which orders mid-twenty-six, if I remember correctly.
And the plans to, to improve the intersection there, sixty-five and industrial.
That rod project is not scheduled to bid until sometime in twenty-twenty-six. Yes, sir.
Wade, the DG Market, I know that we went back, sent it back and do you think that is, the project has changed to the extent that we were asking?
Well, I think so. So the original front, you know, public street facing facade was just your basic. One Dollar General split face block that you see, they put, they put up in blue. As planning, the Planting Commission worked with them, what they ended up with is it's actually the first, it's going to have a five-foot course of painted brick. Brick and then it'll actually be a Harley Wood type siding, which will give it that wood siding look. So, so instead of that, that, you know, kind of start commercially industrial look of just a split face block, it'll have a nexus brick and siding look.
Okay, thank you.
Wade, any update on, I'm not sure if I'm using the right phrase, the drainage study out at the airport?
Drainage study is complete. We need to buy money and kind of start working with, with airports to figure out the options there. I've tried to schedule a couple of meetings. I know I've tried to make it to a couple of airport more meetings. So the last thing that this, that comes with other things on my side. But we've got some pretty good options to increase the detention in that area. It's just, it's going to need to be a walk in the project from us and us and airport.
Thanks.
All right, Wade, thank you. Chief Lowry?
Afternoon, counsel. I'm going to keep it pretty brief. You've got my report in front of you. One of the things I'm going to update you on, Chief Grady, is we also been extremely shortened. It's we've had two positions and we've had two gun academy and a couple of her. So we've been down several. Just interviewed two today for a full-time position. So much like we're going to get at least those started down that direction. I'm going to hold off on anything else because I know I've got a couple of things coming up a little bit as far as the storms, irons and stuff. But is there any questions from my report? Okay, thank you all.
Okay, Luke?
All right, just a few things out of finance. We've actually been down the last couple of days. We, we got it out on Facebook, but we're transitioning over into our online financial reporting software. That way, it actually makes it a little bit easier for people that actually aren't in this building to be able to access our financial software. So anybody in public works, water department, sewer department, they, they have to VPN into our server. This takes that out of it and lets us be able to utilize it. It also helps see our fire department whenever they're out doing their building code stuff, they can actually, as long as they've got an internet connection, they can now log into our, our financial platforms. That hasn't happened in the past, but we are down just for these next couple of days. We will be back on Monday. So we apologize for any inconvenience as far as paying water bills, but thank you all again for approving that. It's going to help a lot of people out in the field. Sales tax, good numbers to report again. Didn't quite make top ten on our, on our city part of it, but the county had a really good month and I think they were top six. So it continues to be good. We were well over budget on what we had. We were over last year. Again, always like to contribute those good numbers. James, if you don't mind, one of the projects that was funded and wish Mary Jean was here to see it. We did get Rose Hill paid. That was one of the things since I'm on the board, I wanted to bring that in front of you. Mary, whenever we have our meetings, the Twentieth Century Drive lady should be very happy.
Thank you, Luke.
I know they've been wanting that for a while. And then lastly, budget. We've been working on some budget numbers. I met with the two fire chief, police chief. I was actually, I, I was not thinking clearly and scheduled a budget meeting today whenever we were changing financial software and that doesn't work very well. So I've got with, with Public Works. We've got it rescheduled and we'll have that. Hopefully we'll, we'll be able to do that next week. And then I'll be honest, our parks, I'm going to probably wait till a little closer to maybe that way we can get some Creekside information in there and have a good idea of what that's going to need to be budgeted with, with all of that information. So you should have a, a good budget in front of you in November. I will try to get as much of it as I can in October. But I'm kind of, kind of pushing you up till November so we can get Creekside up and on and then get some, some numbers running through there. I may even have updated numbers for you in December, depending on how it goes. That being said, the cost of living increase that's out there for social security right now is two point six percent. That will be in the budget for our employees. Whether you all aside from there. You may have any question? I'm anxious here a second.
You mentioned internet access to financial systems.
Yes.
Are you confident that the security is sufficient to prevent the city from being hijacked by players whose interests are other than our own?
Yeah, yes, I am. Of course, I do this a lot of different cities around the country. But of course, we've got it backed up dual locations. It's, it's going to be offsite. That actually helps us with our IT audit also by having it offsite. But there are lots of, I, I wish David was here to is it, he is here.
He is, sir.
David could probably tell you a little bit more on how that would work, but I'm, I'm, I'm very confident in our, in our BSNA software. That's our provider. I'm very confident that they know what they're doing. Thank you, sir. You can speak.
Any other questions for Luke? All right, thank you, Luke. Now, David Wilson. Yeah, you might give him an answer, but not the big answer.
Right.
Not the whole technical stuff.
Well, that's a, that's a good question, Lowry, because that's important. And the factor, the fact is, yes. Point-to-point encryption is going on and that, as well as we're going to be implementing some duo authentication in the future for for security. So it'll have, you know, multi-factor authentication regarding that on top of, on the location wise, the locations, even though it's offsite, all the data, that was important to me too. So I really asked a lot of questions and looked at the paperwork and they go, they have two locations where the data is constantly synchronized in the cloud and they have to meet all the audit requirements, like financial requirements.
The authentication strength, I mean, how far out is that?
This next first quarter of this next year.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, and now, my report, pretty much my, what I've been doing right now is going over the phones and the internet since we're in the middle of the migration. We started it, thank you for proving that, because they've already been able to get the fiber ran ritter into the Creekside building. So that's going to help and substantially less expensive than what we were paying before or would be paying for this. So right now, I'm going line by line through our phone bill, internet, and I've seen a lot of things. Maybe we can help reduce costs without sacrificing what our people do in the field. So that is something I'm working on as well as Creekside. So that's pretty much all kind of my kind of, you know. But if you have any questions for me, be glad to try to answer.
Okay, any questions for David? All right, David, thank you. And Reed, by the way, you know, as far as security, we're never bulletproof, but this guy right here makes us all feel a lot better. And we know that he knows what he's doing and then some, David. Wait, you're the best, David.
Well, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, all right. Thank you. Okay, let's go down to community environment. Reed?
Nothing for today's meeting, sir.
All right, we'll go over to Mitch and get finance.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, we've got four items coming out of finance. The first, I'm going to go with the financials. One of the things that Luke did not mention, or two things actually, are the general fund has a positive cash flow for the period of nineteen thousand dollars. Small but positive. So that's good news compared to this time last year. In addition, Water and Sewer Fund went up by forty-four thousand dollars, which we've had issues there for years and we're, we're seeing that gain a balance now. So any questions or comments? I know some of this you just got ahold of. So, but if you had any questions. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is the budget adjustments for the wastewater treatment plants. Wade, you'll speak to this. We've looked at it in committee and once again, given it to his counsel, can you go over why we need the transfer switch?
Yeah, the, the basically the, the control handle on our transfer switch, which is the you know, the gear that, that changes the wastewater plant from line power over to the generator up there. Our, our control panel started to go bad. It's kind of getting into touchscreen LCD, LCD right now that we've got. Pretty high-end, but it's reaching the end of its life and it's getting to the point that you're starting to have trouble doing the manual switchovers when, when we have to go off grid for our peak shading for, for the special rates we get from Entergy. So the original quote we got for replacement was what exactly what we had was, was over a hundred thousand dollars. So I had to go back and we kind of found some different options, a little bit less, a little bit less Cadillac and a little bit more, you know, they're sharing type for, for what we need there. And then, and then we get the job done and do what we need and actually probably last a little bit longer and then something more fancy. But that still comes with price tag of thirty thousand dollars. So that is the budget adjustment request. Just to let you know, I had put in the budget to do the same replacement down at the mainless station by Cricket Creek, which has the same type of transfer switch and controller. Starting to have, not having serious issues with it yet, but we're starting to. So I've gone ahead and budgeted that for next year. Assuming it gets approved and we'll go ahead and get that done. That way it's taken care of to both those, because those are two, two facilities that when we need to go to generator power, we've got to, we've got to be able to have that paper there.
Make a motion, we approve budget increase thirty-two thousand dollars to the line item listed in the documentation.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
On the same type of item, we have a five thousand dollar budget adjustment on a different switch. And you want to address that as well?
Yes, sir. So this is actually at Public Works, very personally, so we have a generator that I'm there at that facility, much smaller scale type of equipment and quite a different than what we have. But again, the controller's starting to go bad. It's getting to the point that we can't, we can't program it or reprogram it. And sometimes we need to do that. A lot of it's basically because the, just the small screen is starting to go out and we can't really see it. And know what we're doing with it. The, the adjustment is an increase of eleven thousand five hundred. The original budget for this line item was five thousand. So it is an increase of eleven thousand five hundred at the end. Hopefully that'll take the rest of the issues we have with that transfer switch going there for a while.
Make a motion, we approve budget increase for eleven thousand five hundred for the line and item, item line listed in the documentation.
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Chief Lowry? Mayor, the next item we have is the storm, uh, storm siren funding. And Chief Lowry will speak to that.
Okay, in the, the most past, we've talked about this a few times and talking with other administration, we felt like that the, the best financial way to handle this is just pay this. I brought to you all last at the committee in request for doing the storm siren and then the control system. So the control system is basically what talks to the storm sirens. That will be based in, in our building here. It's a satellite driven and it's when Noah weather sets out a, a storm alert, we get it, but automatically sets off our sirens. So it takes out the human intervention part of it to make sure it's done. The, the base station itself is going to be, the controller system is going to be twenty-six thousand eight hundred twenty-seven fifty dollars. The single siren that I felt like we need to go and replace, and that is a complete siren, that is everything. It's old, everything, you've got that site. And that's going to be at the Union Road, uh, storm sirens. And that's going to be thirty-two thousand one hundred and thirty and twenty-one cents with a grand total of fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-one.
With a grand total of fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-one cents. Um. I did get other. Systems looked at, I did get the price. Um, we're not comparing apples apples here, so I am going to be asking for a bid waiver as well. I don't hope that now or later, but um.
We'll ask for that later, but um, we just want to make sure we have the information, so.
Sure. You know, one of the things I got to bring up again, especially we've got a good crowd here, you know, we need to make sure what these intensity storm sirens are. You know, they're not able to alert everybody. They're. You know, you can't be asleep in your house with the fan running and expect to hear this thing. We've got to make sure people understand, uh, not be solely dependent on these things, so it's a tool. Um, and just make sure we know that, so. You all have any questions about it or?
So you're looking at doing this over a phased in for how many years?
Uh, this, two more years basically. We'll do two more next year. Um, I'll go with Mr. Raglin there earlier about a grant.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we do feel like we can probably be eligible for some grant money next year to help pay a part of it. Um, which will ease the the cost of losing it next year.
We're looking at roughly fifty-eight in those two next year as well.
Be so on the on the sirens themselves, they're gonna be a little bit more. It's gonna be, they're gonna be thirty-two thousand one hundred and three dollars. A piece, so sixty-two thousand. Hey, but again, hopefully we'll get some grant money and ease that a little bit next year.
So did I hear that it it's gonna be complete in two years? Is that true?
Yeah, it'll be this year and then two more next year and the next year, so yeah, two and a half.
Thank you.
Make a motion, approve. Uh. Well, I guess we need to. Pull this from what line? We're gonna have a budget just. Okay.
It doesn't really fit in any other category.
Well, I apologize, I forgot to ask you that, so. Um, so yeah, I'd make a motion, we uh. Make a budget adjustment as well. And pull this from the general fund in the amount. Chief Larry, I've got the amount separate here, so we're looking at how much total?
It's gonna be a total of fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-one cents.
We'll make the motion for fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars, seventy-one cents.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the storm sirens?
We do have a resolution also to pass in reference to this.
But you want to wait till? That committee?
No, uh, if you want to back up, we'll just do the resolution right now.
Okay.
Okay, uh, the resolution is number thirteen oh nine.
Oh, there you go.
Mm-hmm. It's zero nine. It's a resolution approving waiver of bidding requirements and authorizing the Harrison Fire Department to contract. The table rock alerting system for a storm siren and controlling system. And I'll make a motion that we pass this resolution number thirteen oh nine.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the bid waiver? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, that's all out of finance.
All right, Mitch, thank you. Uh, Larry.
Mr. Mayor, we have um appraisals for certain properties and Wade, would you cover those for us, please, sir?
Uh, yeah, just kind of briefly, you know, review what we discussed committee, uh, senior club property there, just about probably sixty-five, the price we paid was at five hundred and ten. Thousand dollars in the sewer house, what's called sewer house, it's a small house, I sold it a month ago, it's still a sewerly property. Uh, that would pay in at a hundred point five thousand. Uh, not sure I'm looking. I guess maybe we're wanting to kind of continue the discussion, a little bit of direction, who cares as far as. Uh, what your thoughts are or what, you know, what we do with these properties, do we dispose of them, let them back into private ownership, I sell them. Um, no city departments have really, you know, indicated that they have a need for them. Um, so it it's one of those things, you know, for me, if we don't have a need, you need to be looking at. Kind of what to do.
And I thought we generally discuss searching. This out to surplus the properties. Did we not?
We are going to do a project, we are going to work on on kind of inventory all of the properties and other surplus, um, just these are two that we're maintaining right now and if. If you want, let me go ahead and.
Yeah, I think one uh.
Sell of them, great, if we want to hold up and. You know, maybe try to do, we'll set fire, so do anything. If the council wants to to move back into private ownership, you know, all at once, we can do that as well.
Mitch, I believe we started out when the uh senior center went vacant.
Right.
And that was probably six months ago. And at that time, we decided to try to move out of some of the vacant properties we have now. And then uh go ahead and catalog everything we do own and make a proposal on that. That'll probably take a little while longer. But we do have these two available. Uh, right now appraisal's been done and we can sell them whatever you all decide. But, you know, I don't know why we've accumulated a a lot of these properties and then we let, you know, people. Live in them for nothing or use them and. You know, and the senior center was a good thing, but once they built the new one out here, it didn't seem to get a whole lot of use. And the building's probably worthless. Wade, was that appraisal? Uh, did he share what? Yeah, he shared with you the appraisal number. Did that include the building or was that just a land appraisal?
I mean, it was, it was land and building, I don't.
They included it, but there's no value in the building. Uh, you know, the land would be obviously the value. And we continue to have people want to uh use these facilities and we are much better off just to uh move them into private ownership, in my opinion. So that's uh kind of where we are, kind of a two-stage operation.
We really don't have a direction that we want to go.
We do with these two. I think we ought to liquidate. I I I I recommend we. We move to sell both of these properties or we haven't used one for fifteen years and the other is. Not much had mu- much use.
So are we gonna try and list them with an agent?
I don't know. I don't care. Um. You know, maybe after this gets out, maybe people will be calling us. There's a pretty, I was surprised with the appraisal on the bypass.
Mm-hmm.
I I the house is gonna be no problem at a hundred and a quarter, in my opinion, but that bypass property. Or we may have to uh put that out there and then reevaluate.
I mean, we've got a few different options on how we would dispose of the properties, you know. Taking seal bits is always an option. Obviously, we want to put a reserve on it. The city has the ability to market those properties themselves.
I think we'd like to call the neighbors that have neighboring property, especially one. Because I think our property includes their parking lot. I think so.
It, the the parking lot itself, no, there's a weird little uh.
Who would definitely have interest in part of this.
Parking lot itself is not. There's actually a strange little jog in our, in the city's property. That technically landlocks that parking lot away from the parking lot. That's a. That's a small item that it does need to be addressed. Um, that can be handled quite cleanly.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is that? In in all likelihood, it was a error to pass property description that caused that problem.
Well, from from the standpoint of. The financial standpoint, I would like to see us give direction and have a plan. I don't know.
Mm-hmm. We can bring a plan.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd hate to see billboards go on that property.
Yeah. Agreed.
Yeah, they could. I mean, they could. Yeah, probably.
So I assume we need no motion to move forward. You're just gonna take this?
I think just for information, wouldn't it, Wade? Yeah.
Mostly, we can just partially continue that discussion.
If you got an idea to go forward, we're. You know, we'd like to hear it, but we can, we can come back with a proposal.
Would that be appropriate for super recommendation from my city planning commission?
I. I don't think so. Uh, not necessary. I wouldn't say inappropriate, but I don't think it's necessary. I mean, properties are, well. One of the properties is outside, actually outside the city limits. They're not going to have any input on that. The other is is in a commercial area, so I don't. I don't foresee anything from them. Other than we will likely have to rezone the the. Senior club property because it's split between two different zones right now. A portion of it is still. Residential, it shouldn't be, but back in the day, that's how it got its own. That that will need to be corrected and we'll require the planning commissions to incorporate as far as. Uh, selling property, no, I don't, I don't think it's a point necessary.
And I would say, wouldn't that be a conflict of interest? Ask for input and then then speak on the, just honing?
It could be, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right, Larry.
Nothing else, Mr. Mayor?
All right, let's go on to uh, we have Jeremy.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. We just have one item. Uh, I think Wade will be coming back up here to talk about the annual salt bids.
So it's pretty straightforward. Um, we did take bids for our annual ice control material, basically called salt. Uh, bid tab was in. Little split up on the garage, should have been in the packets that you received. Uh, the main item that we purchased is Boll's Rock Salt. Uh, the low bid this year came from Hudson's Salt, which they had a contract last year at ninety-four dollars and ninety-six tons. Uh, ninety, ninety-four dollars and ninety-six cents per ton. Um, interestingly enough, that's actually twenty cents per ton less. Than last year's contract, so that might be the first thing I've bid out or. Got in the quote room where the price has gone down in the last event, so we were kind of happy to see that. Not much changed, but it is one of those, uh, so I did need approval to go ahead and with this contract, so we can get our first orders put in the. What we hope is another difficult.
Well, I would move to accept the bid from Hudson's Salt. Company as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Okay, now we're getting into some stuff here. Wayne, go on.
All right, I've got three more items on my, out of my committee. First one is resolution number one-three-zero-eight. This is resolution certifying the general tax mileage rates for year two thousand twenty-five, and Luke's already on.
Uh, it's just housekeeping hour. We do it every year. Uh, we just got to approve it before the the county does theirs, and so it's just a renewal for all the. Uh, islands, the last some of the priorers.
Make a motion, we approve the approval of the mileage rate.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we're gonna.
Uh, my next one is resolution number one-three-one-zero-thirteen-ten, a resolution allowing mayor to sign community match rural position recruitment application.
And for this one, Mr. Mayor, there are four people who signed up on the agenda items list. Uh, and one other person signed up on the uh citizen comment list. And that may have just been inadvertent.
Okay.
So be guard ready for those comments.
Okay, before we go to comments, Wayne, could we let Luke maybe explain to everyone again what this is for? And then go right to your comments?
About that, I forgot to bring my my piece of paper. Uh, we were approached. Uh, by Baxter Regional, it's been so weeks ago now, um, about a. Uh, Arkansas Community Match Rural Positions Recruitment Program. I believe we may have someone in the inside. I'm sorry, I did not say hi earlier. Uh, who's with the program, um, and she could probably do a better job of explaining it than I could, but since we were approached. Um, it it does allow, or it does require the mayor to sign off on the program if is so desired. Um, for bringing a physician to town. Um, and it allows them to be in this program where the state actually gives funding of a forty thousand dollars and it allows. An another entity to match the forty thousand. I think there's been some confusion that the city matches it. That is not true. Uh, the city is is. Has no funding mechanism in place to do that, but. If you don't mind, um, let me. Bring Miss Tammy Hinson flat up here to maybe explain it a little bit more.
Thanks, thank you, Luke. Good idea.
And this happens to be one of the people who signed up for all of this.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think you.
I want to be real close.
I'm sorry. Uh, thank you, Luke, and thank you, Council for letting me come and talk to you about the program. Uh, we have a, the state program that's been in place since nineteen forty-nine and. Twenty seventeen, uh, we changed the the. What a fall by community is. Harrison is always qualified anyway. Uh, the city in this case has no financial obligation at all for this contract. Uh, it's gonna be through Baxter Regional and they're gonna provide the. Community portion, they're gonna donate that money to the city. And the state will match that money and you'll be able to have a physician come in your community and. It'll help him with his financial loans, as you know. Are very expensive now, it's very expensive to go to medical school. So this is something the state has had in place a long time to help them with their medical school debt. So. Anytime it's a community match, the mayor has to sign a form saying, yes, we're allowing the physician to come in and when you can assign. Um, the C E O of Baxter to do the administrative part.
Okay. This is something we did about three years ago for Dr. Branskin with Cox. And it was the same type of matching grant. I think it was exactly the same amount. Yeah, so.
And so the city had no financial obligation and Cox, um, healthcare takes care of the financial event.
Okay.
So it's a win-win for everybody. You get a physician and there's no financial obligation.
All right, any questions?
What made uh the doctor choose Harrison over another community?
Well, I mean, two years ago, we started doing field trips with our medical students from all three medical schools and we brought them. Through Harrison and they met the mayor and he gave a great presentation that we had some physician, we had some physicians there and talked to the students. There were about forty-five of them. And he just really liked the community. And so when he was in residency, Baxter Regional approached him about coming to work here and. His wife is also in the medical field, so they both decided this is where they want to live and raise their family.
Are there any? Considerations from the point of view of the North Arkansas Regional Medical Center that should be considered, yeah?
Um, well, no, it's it's up to the city, of course, but um. The hospital will benefit from having another doctor here so that he can have a place to refer patients. Um, but you'll just have one more family medicine physician in your city and. And the hospital can also take part in this program. If they have a physician they want to hire, the city can provide the funding or the hospital can provide the funding and. They can use that as a recruitment tool to help. Get more physicians here.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, you have the other color, color shirt.
Yeah.
Um, we have Stephen Beeler.
Okay, I'm Steve Beeler. I'm uh chairman of the board of North Arkansas Regional Medical Center. And I wouldn't necessarily call that a win-win. I'm obviously here to speak in opposition of resolution thirteen-ten. I would call it a lose for our local, your local hospital. Um, we have our finger on the pulse of healthcare in our city. We know how many physicians, we know how many. Patients those physicians treat. We can tell you unequivocally, we do not need another primary care physician. We just don't. Um, secondly, anything, we're very effective in treating every citizen of our city. Whether they. Bring anything to us financially or not, they're gonna get treated at the highest level possible. Anything we do that dilutes our market share by bringing in a competitor's physician. Dilutes our ability to deliver on what I just told you. So it's really not in our city's best interest. It's not in N A R M C, your hospital's best interest. To pursue bringing a competitor's physician to our city. Thanks for your time.
Dr. Beeler? May I? You have other board members here tonight?
Yes.
Could you introduce them?
Yeah, Mr. Dan Bowers, Dr. Lawson. Kurt, Kurt was here. Uh, Kurt Campbell was here. Kurt Campbell has had to leave, had to go to his child's baseball game or something. Uh, we have we, we have administration here also.
Good.
We have Sammy Robinson, our CEO, with Josh Bright, uh, CEO. Do we have anyone else?
Yeah.
Ms. House, or Marketing Director.
Sure.
Okay.
And so they're gonna, you know, they're, they're here for the same reason.
As I read the grant, um, read the resolution and, and as I found out more about the grant, it's for underserved uh, communities in Arkansas.
Right.
You, you related that this community isn't underserved.
Well, not underserved in terms of primary care practitioners at all.
Okay.
We have actually a few that we really should have. We would like more specialists. So if we could get a program that would help us bring some specialists in that you can help us with, we're all on board with that. Primary care, we do not need.
So would you access this program for specialists, but not for primary care?
My understanding is at this point, it's not available for specialists.
Only primary care.
Only primary care. So we just recommend that you vote.
I'd like to ask one.
No, you're not. I'm sorry.
So would it? Would it be safe to assume you think it was a mistake that the community, that the council supported this for Dr. Branscombe three years ago?
Probably that was a different situation. We had an operating agreement with Cox at that time. So we were kind of in partnership in a way with them to operate and they helped us, we helped them. But they didn't dilute our market share because we did cross services. We had no such agreement back. They would simply take the revenue they produce, take it to another county to the detriment of our city.
Okay.
Thank you.
James?
Uh, next is Ron Peterson.
Good evening. Uh, Ron Peterson, President of Baxter Health. And, um, appreciate the opportunity to be able to have a couple of minutes to explain why we're here and why we're asking for this. Uh, Baxter Health does have six different locations in Harrison. We have sixteen providers now in Harrison. We want to try to meet the needs of the community. Um, you were asking why this particular physician wanted to move to Harrison. He was very impressed with Dr. Jackson also, including the two, no question, but then when he came here and met Dr. Jackson, felt that, uh, he had a good fit and, uh, there's a good match there. Dr. Jackson feels that he needs an additional person, additional physician in his office. And, uh, so we would like to continue to provide services that we can provide in the community. We'd like to continue to try to work to help the, uh, meet the healthcare needs in the community. And, um, we would appreciate your support of the resolution thirteen, ten. And I would say that Baxter Health will contribute all the money, so there's no financial. It's just really to the benefit of the community to get an additional physician here.
Okay, sure. Uh, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Is Dr. Witt coming to Harrison to this clinic contingent upon this grant?
It, it is not, uh, I, I believe at least our our goal would be that he would come no matter what. Um, obviously he would have some feelings or concerns and wonder why the community would not sign something like this. So there's a potential, I have not talked to him about this, but there's a potential that he can say, oh, the community doesn't want me. Where else could I go? And we do have some other options, but it just seems to be a great fit here and, uh, I would encourage him to come here, even if it didn't, but, uh, there is that potential that we could lose him.
So thank you. How did you get, uh, uh, en- engaged with the doctor, Dr. Witt, is it?
Yes.
So did he, uh, do his residency there? Was there anything, any connection? Or did Baxter Regional search him out? Or how did this work?
Um, he, uh, he is a family practice resident right now, doing his residency in Batesville, actually. And, uh, he's kind of from the Batesville area. And, uh, we have, um, through our physician recruiter, we just had advertisements out there for family practice physicians because we're in need. We're in, uh, eleven different counties about and that's not all primary care, they must say, but about forty different locations.
Mm-hmm.
Even, excuse me. We've been having advertisements out for, for family practice. He came and talked to us and said, we have, I think we have a good fit for you, Dr. Jackson. Came up here, interviewed and, uh, seemed to be a good fit. So it's really how, how we found it. We were advertising generically, but he contacted us.
Okay. All right, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
And finally, we have Dr. P. Corey Jackson.
All right, Dr. Jackson.
No relation.
No relation. No, sir. Yeah.
Mayor, Mayor Jackson sold me a house about twenty-one years ago when I first moved to Harrison, but no relation. I picked him because of his name. So my name is Dr. Corey Jackson. Thank you guys for, for, thank the council for letting me share. I've got a lot to say, but I'll, I'll be in three minutes, but, um, first off, I've been here twenty-one years. Um, I've seen the medical community. I've, I've been in the medical community for twenty-one years. Um, I've met Dr. Witt. He is a, he is a young man, probably, I don't know his exact age, mid twenties, from Truman, Arkansas. He's from small town. He wanted to come back to a small town. His wife is, her name Brooke, she's from Mountain Home. They just wanted to come into a small town, really liked the area. They met uh, Mayor Jackson and then I visited with him. Um, from a, from a, I'd like to address an issue about that we don't need, uh, new, we don't need any more doctors, any more family practice doctors in town. I'd like to, I'd like to tell that to the four to six on average new patient requests I get every day. We have a system where patients fill out, uh, new patient information where there, it's their medical information to request to be a physician, a pa- a patient at our clinic. And we have to turn them down. I have to turn them down because I'm pretty darn busy with what I've got. And if I took on a whole lot, I couldn't take care of the ones I've got. So I've been looking for help for a while. It's hard for an individual to recruit help. Uh, I think another, another statement earlier was mentioned, a competitive physician. Um, I'm one of those competitive physicians. I joined Baxter about a, not about a year ago, actually about twelve months ago. Part of that is, is a whole, there's a whole, there's a whole culture going on in the medical community of this world or this country in a way. Uh, about the complexity of healthcare where, where solo practitioner guys like me can't hardly do it on our own. There's only, as far as I know, there's two or three left in town, Steve Schrum, uh, the, the McClintocks. Maybe, uh, and then there's one other and I can't think of it, but so, so that's been a trend. Twenty-one years ago when I got here, nobody was employed by anybody in ARMC, Baxter, Cox, Washington Regional, those are the four hospital systems that have doctors in Harrison, Arkansas right now. Um, nobody was employed twenty-one years ago, so that's just kind of been a trend. Basically, it, it also does not, I cannot see where it would harm in ARMC. There, there was a common misconception, and I want to make this clear tonight too. There was a common misconception when I joined Baxter a year ago that some of my patients said, but I don't want to go to Baxter for everything. And I'm like, they can't make me refer anywhere. They, they can't make me refer anywhere. I still send a great majority of the, of things I do, the things I order, MRIs, CAT scans, you know, surgery referrals, E and T referrals to Harrison, to Harrison, to the N R M C and also to Harrison doctors just because of the, just because simply it's a location. So there's nothing that, there's no, it would be against the law for, for, for my employee, my employer to, to basically say, you've got to send us X number of dollars every year. Um, I can't see, I can't see a downside um, to, to allowing this, to allowing Dr. Witt to come into town. In, in other words, the cat's already out of the bag, if you will. Um, there's already it's already, uh, four, three other hospital entities in town, Washington Regional, Cox and um, Baxter. So, but thank you for your time. I think my time is up.
Question. Um, so what, you, you say you're, you're not, uh, allied with North Arkansas Regional Medical Center?
Correct.
So do you, can you see patients at the hospital?
If.
Do you have to send, do you have to, uh, send them there and then they get another physician that's?
Well, you're talking about admissions. Um, admissions, and I don't know the numbers on this anymore, uh, but to my knowledge, admissions in N R M C have gone way down in the last few years. I can speak specifically to some numbers, uh, and if you don't mind, I'll just share this with you too. Um, over the twenty-one years that I've been here, Harrison Hospital, you know, twenty-one years ago was doing great, had a lot of doc, had a lot of patients. But twenty-one years ago and especially maybe forty years ago, it was a big deal to drive to Springfield. It was a big deal to go to Fayetteville. It, you know, it was a big deal to go to Little Rock. That was an all-day event. Now it's not. Patients go there in a heartbeat. A prime example of that, I do not have admitting privileges at N R M C. And I dropped that before I even joined Baxter, mainly because the, the last thing I dropped there was pediatric admitting privileges. Uh, and I'll, I'll quote these numbers again, there's administration here to probably give you details, but, uh, the last year that I had pediatric admitting privileges, which means that I can admit children there, uh, you know, under to the hospital that are under eighteen, I think I admitted, it's easy, it was either three or five. And that, that story, three to five in the year, that story was also common with Dr. Schrum and Dr. Brownfield, who I talked to back then. And we kind of got together and thought, you know, we kind of know what we're doing when we talk, when we admit children and taking care of children. But these nurses up here are not getting the, the children, uh, they're not getting the exposure to taking care of children. So, and the reason for that, I firmly believe is because Arkansas Children's opened up in Springfield. And it's no big deal at all for people to either drive there or come to the merch room here and then get transferred. Uh, it's just the nature of, we're, you know, travel is becoming easier than it was twenty to forty years ago. Uh, people don't think anything of driving for, for the big, for the big things anyway. But there's a lot of people too that still say, I've got to go in R M C and I, and I don't have any problem with that. I mean, you know, I ask patients where, where do you, where you prefer to go? Where, you know, that's my, I don't, I don't tell anybody, hey, we need to have this done, you need to have it here. I mean, if they have a preference, then I'm not going to go against that. I mean, to me, that's, that's a setting yourself up for problems because if something goes wrong, well, hey, I was the one that picked that, you know, so.
Well, the true statement that'll be said today is the medical profession, the medical industry is messed up.
Oh, absolutely.
It's, it's never been this bad.
Yeah, yeah, that's, uh, you know, as far as the prop, if you want my opinion there, I'm here to give my opinion, I guess. The, the fact that when you say healthcare in the, in the political realm, and I'm not talking about maybe the local government, but in the big government, they're talking about insurance. And that's a problem. Healthcare is not insurance. Healthcare is what happens, you know, in the, in the clinic room or happens in the hospital room, you know, but, but when you, when you hear the word, that's just part of the example. When you hear the word healthcare, they're talking about health insurance coverage.
So in, in, Dr. Witt chose Harrison, which I'm, you know, I appreciate that. He thinks a lot of our community. What do you think of the comment that it, there's currently enough physicians to serve that market? You said that, that and I've noticed there's been more move in since Dr. Branscombe.
Mm-hmm.
There's more here now and some of the younger physicians like Dr. Ross and Ross Halsted, um, and others that have moved in here, back in here, that, that they're currently serving that need, it seems like.
Well, like I said, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit on an island. I've been on an island. So what I mean by that is, uh, when hospitals started, in R M C started, uh, employing physicians, I was against it. I didn't want to be employed for years and years and years and years. Uh, so I wasn't super involved with N R M C. I don't exactly know what goes on with their clinic physicians. But all I know is that I get on average four to six requests per day, and that's actually written requests. They have to fill out a form. These are people looking for a doctor. And that's four to six per day. That would fill up a clinic really quick. When I joined Sam Scroggins, I was here for, I started here in two thousand and three, worked for Tom Leslie for about seven or eight months, left him when it was Sam Scroggins. The first week I was in with Sam Scroggins, I saw eight patients. That's not very many. I read a lot of books back in those days. So if I had, if I had a doctor in there tomorrow, I could get him four, him or her four to six patients tomorrow and four to six new is Monday and four to six new is, you know, that, that's, we're seeing that. And I don't know if that's, you know, I don't want to toot my own horn here, but I, I, I feel I have one of the better clinics in Harrison. I mean, um, you know, we, we've, I've got some data to, to back that up if you'd like to hear it, but uh, it's, it's, you know.
So it's your practice?
It, it was my practice until, uh, September first of two thousand twenty-three, in which case I sold the practice. I basically let Baxter Regional, Baxter Health run my business. Um, here's another thought, you know, I think it was mentioned that the money that comes into that clinic gets sent to a different community. A big chunk of that money stays exactly what it was when it was my practice a year uh, that's thirteen, fourteen months ago. A big chunk of that money goes to paying the employees that are still there and working with me today. You know, that's where, you know, I mean, you know, me, I get part of that as far as, as far as we talk about gross income and then break it down into net income. Um, you know, the, I'd say the only thing that goes to, to a different county would be you know, small amounts for supplies, but that's not necessarily even coming out of, out of, uh, what is it, Baxter County, I guess, so, uh, again, the, 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 there was another number I, I'll share with you, um, twenty-something years ago when I was in residency, uh, the average family practice doctor generated a million dollars a year for the local hospital. I've asked some of the administration guys here lately, what's that number now? The number now is four to five million dollars a year. That's not based on me seeing patients in clinic. That's based on me sending over CAT scans, sending over MRI, sending over, you know, referring to surgeons who do surgery up there, referring to, you know, all those specialists that do work up there. So that, they don't make, the, the N R M C doesn't make money at all from me seeing patients in clinic. They make money because they're my closest hospital. They're two miles away. So we send, we still send a ton of patients to them. And I think that's, like I said, that's a common misconception is that I send, you know, I have to now change my pers- my referring practices based on who I work for and absolutely not. That would be against the law for them to, to even ask me to do that. So, um, I like Baxter. I mean, that's one of the reasons I called them up eighteen months ago, and I think that's a, you know, it's a really good facility. Um.
Okay.
You, you know.
That good? Anybody else got a question? If not, uh, thank you, Dr. Branscombe.
Sir.
Yeah, we appreciate that. So, uh, before we go to vote and if anybody else wants to make a statement, I'd like to make a statement.
We, uh, we don't have a motion on the floor yet, do we?
No, no motion.
And I think for the council needs to discuss it a little bit ourselves.
Doing discussion.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion that we approve this resolution number thirteen, ten.
And we, now we do discussion? We gotta have a second.
Gotta have a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, let's go to discussion, discussion. Yeah. Okay. You go ahead.
I'm unaware of any application having been reviewed.
Any?
Application been reviewed for the grant program?
It has been, yeah.
Emotional flyer.
No, the application was made and reviewed by internally, uh, by Luke and myself, so.
There is an application, is there?
No, I don't. I left it in my office. Yeah, so do have the formal application.
Resolution requires review and consideration. If it's to be, that's my point.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. You have a copy? All right.
Yeah.
That'll work.
Ms. Nancy, I have some questions. Now, did we sign the promissory note and contract? Who signed that? Who's? Who did this?
The only document I'm aware of on conducting this grant is a resolution that was passed three years ago and, um, I believe there's one in your, in your, in your garage. It says it only makes reference to the fact that the health provider is providing the matching funds that you A D M S.
Okay, I, I believe with this.
Say, thank you.
I believe with this, do we, there is a promissory note, a contract. Where do we see that?
Uh, I have not seen an application, so. This is, uh, the one I, um, one has to be done, other one has to be done, so this one has to be.
That would be, this is the one we have.
So this is the actual position.
Okay.
This is the third one you mentioned.
Which one do you want to see?
Whichever application that, that includes the.
Okay, we're getting the one that we, we have in my.
If you, if you recall, we, we went through a similar procedure, procedure in accessing O B O funds. And we discussed at that time that it's important. And we discussed at that time that it's important that we see what the grant requirements are and the application that the city is signing on to.
Okay. Okay, in in this program, let me ask you a question. In this program, there is a promissory note and a contract that names the city. Have we seen that?
I don't think where.
Where is this? Okay, and it would name Harrison, is that correct? Okay, so that means we're obligating, because we're signing a promissory note and a contract. So we're obligating the city at some point. If that's, let me finish, please, thank you. If Baxter decides they cannot pay or change the criteria, who becomes responsible, Nancy? Do you know? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Phillips, I gave for you uh administration, if there were contents of an application, and I've not seen any of that.
This this is, this is part of the packet.
I mean, the clerk, he is unfamiliar with them as well.
Is this not part of your packet? Okay, where is this? Because the city of Harrison.
Um I gave email everything to.
It's available to us. I I did, yeah, but there is a promissory note and a contract that names the city, so where is that? And who signed it?
None of us.
What I've been provided by the city is a community visiting form. I am familiar with any packet having been provided.
Also, in that packet is a third-party donation, and and it does, we're going on the assumption that Baxter is going to pay that. But it's it's a four-year breakdown of ten thousand dollars a year. If by chance they decide not to do that, is the city responsible?
I need to see the tons of the funds back in the application.
I'm kind of surprised that our city attorney has not seen the contract.
Mr. Phillips, if we have to press the table this and bring it forward in committee after we've had a chance to gather some of this.
You could, but but I have a couple more comments. No, we do not. The health. Resource and Service Administration does a survey every year. And in that survey, Boone County is number eight, Baxter County is number seven. And Marion County, which is next door. To Mountain Home is number sixteen. According to this, you have to be nineteen, number nineteen or above on the scale. To qualify for this grant. So I'm I'm kind of curious, and and I do understand, I that a strong medical community. A strong educational facility and a strong central government or a government. And a strong business community make a city grow. And that's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about the need. Currently, we have twenty practicing primary care physicians, thirteen practicing primary care nurses. Now, which clinic they choose to go to, uh we have substantial medical staff. In Harrison that we do not need as a city to provide another physician. We have had comments from private practice physicians, there is not a need. And if you if you review currently the um. Medical doctors to fill their ability, I believe that the number is two thousand. If you take thirty-eight times two thousand, our population would have to be over seventy thousand to need another facility or need another physician. So my question is, why is the city, why are we as a city considering a resolution that does not benefit? You you had your chance, sir, I'm sorry. Why are we as a city? And and you can speak in just a few minutes if you, if the mayor will allow. Why are we as a city looking at fracturing our medical community with another physician? When there is not a need? Now, that's my personal re- act question, and in the resolution, it talks about maintaining doctors in our community. Our doctors in our community are here to build their practice. And as we have more doctors and that practice is thinner and thinner, they will go elsewhere. And and maybe to Yellville or Flippin, but they will go elsewhere to build their practice. But but there is not a need in Harrison according to these numbers. And the question is, if there is a need, why wouldn't we consider the city and counties? That is number sixteen as sort of the one that's number eight. So, that's just my question. I I would be adamantly opposed to this resolution. Yes.
Yes, we're in discussion.
Me and my family have attempted to acquire a primary physician in the city of Harrison, and we're unable to do so. And we currently and have for the past three or so years traveled to Mountain Home, to Baxter. To get any care at all. The doctors say. We don't have the bandwidth or resources to take on new patients. Now, to your comment. I experienced that firsthand.
Dr. Rossen?
Dr. Rossen, you should come up here. We can't hear. We'll get you next, Dr. Jackson.
We surveyed several hours, okay?
Yeah, I mean, as far as, you know, primary care physicians go, Dr. Rossen, I'm internal internist and uh chief of staff here. Um, you know, yeah, um you can go on our website and and schedule a new patient appointment to be seen tomorrow morning with with. One of my partners and and on, I think, Monday with me. Um we don't require an application process because, you know, we find that just delays care, delays getting appointments. Um, you know, we choose to kind of take care of whoever decides that they want to want to make an appointment to to come see. You know, I talked to several other physicians around and and saying, you know, same type of thing as far as as far as the need goes. Uh we do have some younger, younger physicians that have have come into the community. Um over the last few years that are still building a practice and still still taking new patients. Um and so, eh you know, as far as, as far as access goes, I don't think access is is a, is an issue. Um and as as far as I think volume goes, I don't think that's an issue either. Um but, you know, I I think having um. You know, inviting, inviting another uh organization in or so- supporting that from a, from a community standpoint. Um I think kind of sends, you know, sends a wrong message to our physicians that we have here that shows them be here. And and are are reinvesting back, you know, directly into the community. Um so, you know, that's uh, but but as far as the, you know, the ability to. Get um into a clinic or um or or access that care. Um that certainly shouldn't be um, shouldn't be happening.
Okay. All right, sure. Thank you, Dr. Jackson.
Thank you, sir. I'd just like to answer your your question, Mr. Phillips. So, again, going back on numbers, I remember from twenty years ago, there were approximately twenty-five primary care doctors in Harrison, twenty-five, twenty years ago, twenty-one years ago. And there were approximately twenty-five uh specialists in Harrison twenty years ago. Um and I thought, wow, that's a lot of doctors for a town of, at the time, thirteen thousand. What's different about the Harrison medical community, though, is we don't just serve Harrison, we don't just serve Boone County. We're we're, what what, what happens in medicine is the state line tends to stop a lot of people. So the, so north is our far, is the shortest way we go. We go about twenty miles north, hit hit the state line, we stop there. But if we go towards Mountain Home, I see patients out, Yellville, Flippin, that way. If we go south, we go about an hour in cover. I mean, we, we, if we go back to the east, we go Kingston and Huntsville. So so it's it's unfair to look at Harrison, Arkansas, say, look at the newer doctors you've got in Harrison, Arkansas. Another point to that is, one of the no, the the most common reason a doctor either doesn't go to a, to a, to a place. And this may be sexist a little bit here, but to it to a place or an, the reason a doctor leaves a town is usually their spouse, their wife. Who says, I'm not moving to Yellville, Arkansas, I'm not moving to Walgreen, Arkansas, or whatever it might be. So Harris is kind of a local withdrawal, and it's the local, it's the medical community for a bigger area than Boone County.
Well, I I understand that part, but Marion County is the one that has the opening, so if you're receiving patients, you know, from there. Maybe there is a doctor or a city over there that would, you know, need that also. And and the comment on moving, I I transferred in my previous career, I transferred every year or so up until Harrison. So we understand not going to where we don't want to go. So, thank you, Dr. Jackson.
Are we not talking about a hypothetical, maybe Marion County needs a doctor? This doctor wants to come here, doesn't want to go to Yellville. So we're gonna, what are we gonna do, try to make him?
I I'm not trying to make him do anything he doesn't want to do. Sir, but the point about it is, another doctor, according to our medical community, is not needed here in most cases.
Mr. Peterson?
And do we have one inside? Or we we've never seen this, right?
If you don't mind.
On on my statement previously, um the resolution that is contained in council packet, I don't know the proponent of the resolution. It indicates in its plain language that the application has been reviewed and approved. So that was my first question.
Worth the application. Okay. Sure.
So I have a question in in in. None of these decisions, when we set up here, uh for some people, it's decided in their mind. For example, I haven't made up my mind yet. I listened to all the information and make the best, the more information I have, the better, obviously. And some of this information I've gotten before we got here, but I'm going to ask you this. If this doctor and Dr. Jackson, you may answer, Mr. Peterson can't. If we don't approve approve this application, will Dr. Witt come here anyway?
Um, my personal goal is to still have him come here. I don't know how he will respond or think about that. He does know that we have other openings in other communities, so he may ask if he can look in other communities. My goal would be to leave him here. Uh if he doesn't come, just to be honest, we want to help Dr. Jackson, we want to get him. Uh the appropriate help that he needs to meet the healthcare needs.
So who's the primary financial benefactor of the grant? Is it the doctor?
Doctor, the doctor receives all the money.
Okay.
We we put in, basically over a four-year period, we put forty thousand dollars into it. Put ten thousand dollars a year into it, give him a bonus in the states, let's ten thousand dollars into it.
And so what is the benefit to Baxter Regional for being involved with that? Is this adding to that practice?
Adding to that.
Thank you.
All right. Well, with that said.
I have a comment.
Well, go.
We're still in discussion.
Yes, sir, and we will be there a little while.
Well, go ahead.
Go ahead, sir.
Miss my chance.
No, you got it.
Have so many more of these chances. We have a doctor wanting to come to our community. And it seems like there's a good chance that doctor's coming whether we pass this or not, or they're going to try to find another one. If I'm understanding what's what's been said. I feel like this is a really bad look for how anybody that want, any, anyone in any profession. But in the medical field, want to come here and just completely discount it. And we certainly have a precedent. I was on the council when we unanimously supported Dr. Branson, not one negative comment about it.
Sure.
So you have to ask yourself, what's the difference?
Okay, no, I agree.
And one one thing. Shouldn't the granting agency be the one determining what's eligible? Not us. If if they apply and they say, wait, you don't even meet the numbers, it's not, you're not eligible, it won't get funded.
They have determined the eligibility, and actually, the eligibility, would you want to share that again? It's real simple. You know, it's a town of twenty thousand or less with twenty thou- twenty miles away from a large city.
In twenty seventeen, the board, and and it is a state board, because this is a state program. It was created in nineteen forty-nine, it's been a long time. Twenty seventeen, um if you look at the statute, the way they described a medically underserved community. They asked for percentages or ratios of different things, and it may be difficult because we didn't know what the percentage was supposed to be or the ratio. So the board came up with um a twenty thousand dollar or twenty thousand population or less, that's a qualifying community. And it has to be twenty miles away from a community over twenty thousand. That's the only qualification they look at them. If there's special needs in that community, the board will look at that, and then they can make a determination. But Harrison is always qualified for this program. And to answer the question about if um something happens at Baxter and they can't provide the funding. The community is not, they don't have to put up that funding, the state will still contribute their portion of that contract. But the city will not have to pay a dime. So, I just want to make sure that.
What I say, just on a personal.
Mayor Protim. We had somebody else who's going to answer.
Okay, I got it.
Do we, do we recess?
No.
And hold?
Council to hold for just a moment.
Okay.
Thank you, you did good.
Now, you had comments yourself.
I do have comments, because you know.
I think Jared still.
Okay, well, I can't comment. Just be a second. It will not be long. We'll take care of it. Now, we haven't had this much activity since the last meeting. You know, it's uh. Never a dull moment down here, folks. If you, if you need some entertainment, come on down to City Council. We meet twice a month.
Yes, sir, Dan. Okay, we'll see if he wants one.
Sure, I would. Think I kind of know what I'd like to hear. Here, yeah.
Mayor, can we do this with the attorney out of the room?
I don't think so. We can wait. I don't know, but I know I'm safe in waiting. He does her job. All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um yeah, Jeremy, uh Dan, you want to take that?
You want to restate what you.
If I can remember what I was going to say.
Uh Dan knows.
What what I wanted, my comment first is, I don't want anyone to take any of my comments as if I'm against our hospital. I I support the hospital. I won't go into all the procedures I've had there. Uh because some of that can get a little embarrassing, but uh. Uh, because some of that can get a little embarrassing, but, uh, three, all three of my children were born there, uh. So I support the hospital and I would support, I really can't imagine, when really thinking about this. Not supporting anyone, any, any doctor from an NARMC that come up here with this same application. I think I will be supportive of it, so that, that's that, go ahead.
I think you asked about what was the difference between now and when, uh, it was Cox.
Dr. Branson.
Yeah, and Dr. Branson, uh, was in Cox, and, uh, so, uh. Cox came down here and worked with, uh, North Arkansas Medical Medical Center. On a collaborative basis to provide additional care in our community. And so, uh, we consider Cox an ally of ours. And of course, like the Branson's offices in the Med advisor, along with, uh, our other physicians and early cares. Uh, Baxter, we don't consider, I don't consider to be an ally. They have come down here to, uh, come over here to promote their system. Uh, and so I, I couldn't say that they're an ally, I would more likely consider them adversary.
You okay? All right, Dan, thank you. Yes, sir. Well, uh, we'll make this the last comment other than myself.
Well, well, one thing that, uh, you know, I didn't mention earlier was in two thousand nine, when I started medical school. I, I signed an agreement with our hospital to, to pay for my tuition with, with the agreement to come back to the community and, and, and be here. And it was on a year by year, I'm, on basis, and I continued a lot of that support and residency, um, in terms of the stipends. So, you know, I mean, if, if there's a physician that's wanting to come here, there's certainly nothing that, that's stopping, you know, I mean, Baxter from, from paying. Doing the same agreement outside of any type of community grant program. Um, similar to what our hospital here has done for years with, with physicians, with brought them down. Um, and so there's, you know, there's certainly no, um. No reason that, that couldn't be the same, the same thing without, you know, the, the city, uh, you know. Going through the, there's the grant program.
Okay, thank you, uh. Well. I know you're the board chair, but, uh, no, thank you. We're gonna move on to my comment and then possibly vote. Uh, what I would like to say is, I am, over the last few months, we have been working hard. On recruiting business to Harrison. We have a lot of restaurants, we have clothing stores. Uh, I think in the next couple of years, you're gonna see a lot of new additions. And when it comes to me trying to think, if that clothing store or if that restaurant's gonna hurt the guy next door. I cannot consider that. Uh, you know, that sounds like something we were accused of many decades ago. And I don't consider that, but I think this is different. I think, uh, I support Baxter fully. I will never be against Baxter Health or Cox or Washington. Uh, Washington general, so. With that said, I have spoke with many docs this week. I think ours came out Tuesday evening on the agenda, and all of a sudden my phone lights up from everybody. There are people that really think I have something, I'm in charge of the hospital, you know? I can do this, I can do that. Well, of course, I can't do anything, but I can share this with you. I have spent a lot of time with docs this week and a lot of board members from the hospital, and I have learned a lot. Because up until now, our concern, along with a lot of community leaders, has been. The financial situation of the hospital. Nobody can question the service, uh, the facility, the leadership. We think that's all wonderful, and we always have. But the financial situation was very questionable. And we want to have a hospital, and if it can't be NARMC, we don't care who it is. But we must have a hospital. So, with that said, I believe, and I'm gonna encourage and recommend, I'm not sure it's gonna matter. That we reject the resolution. And this is a way to show support, not only to the hospital. But to seven hundred employees that they employ right now in our community. The morale is, is moving upward, I heard some extremely positive things. They have been in the black, but I would also like to challenge you folks, Steve especially, you're the board chair. Let us know this good news. I wouldn't have known it if we didn't meet with you today. Yes, sir.
During the financial crisis, the inflation crisis, the overall. We operated in the red, why? We chose to.
Yeah, you explained that today.
In the black at any time during that period. You wouldn't like it, you'd be getting rid of VMS and OB-GYN and other services. But for the good of our citizens, we deserve, we chose to spend that money down. To serve the people that we deserve.
Sure, I know many in our community.
I don't think we were in dire financial stress, we never were. We chose to spend that money down to serve people.
Well, the fact that you're moving in the right direction right now makes us all feel better. Yeah. Yeah, I, I understand, and I appreciate you saying that, and I really appreciate the meeting with you today. I mean, that made a huge difference to me. But we've got a, uh, we've got all kinds of healthcare here, and we've got to support them all. But I think in this case, we gotta show support to our hospital. So for that reason, now that might not be a justifiable reason. Because I love Dr. Jackson, of course, and I guess I, I like this other guy that I don't remember meeting. But, uh, and, and we want to welcome them, but this is what the hospital is asking for. So I would like to encourage this council to vote no for the resolution. So with that said, uh, we can, or you can table this and discuss it more next month. So, back to you.
Me, uh, you're the one that's gonna have to call for a vote, but. I believe we had a question earlier about tabling it tonight, so I would like to see if he still wants to do that also.
Damn, sorry, I can't hear him.
You're referring to me?
Yes.
I would prefer additional time to look into the ramifications. So, yes, hey.
Okay.
Mayor, you're the one that calls for the second step in this case.
I'm sorry, Wayne, I have a, I have a hearing problem. Can you hear him and tell me?
You have a motion on, on the floor.
To table?
To table, but you haven't got a second yet.
We have a motion by Reed to table this, and.
We got another motion.
We do have a motion on the floor, uh, to. Uh, I understand, we need a withdrawn if we want to table it, and I think that's you, Wayne.
I made the motion, and I would withdraw my motion at this time.
And you were the second?
Yep.
Now, now I have to withdraw mine first?
Yes.
I don't want to withdraw.
Good.
What's gonna change a month from now? Let's, let's address it, yea or nay? Let's move on with why.
All right, uh, Ms. Cartwright. So we have a motion who withdrew it, but we have a second who holds his.
Well, he has to withdraw his plate first.
So we still have the motion on the floor with.
Right.
I mean, I'm open to some compelling arguments, what delaying this another month helps.
Okay.
I have a feeling we're gonna hear a lot of the same arguments, they're all well made, I think that, I think they deserve an answer either way.
Well, Ben, I encourage you to vote no. Let's call for a vote. And this, I'm sure is gonna go to roll call, but all in favor of passing the resolution, say aye.
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 Who is opposed?
Nay.
No.
Okay, uh, let's have a roll call, James.
Okay, uh, Elizabeth Darden?
No.
Reed, Eddie?
Clarification, what are we voting on?
On passing the resolution.
Pass, pass the resolution.
And the resolution is?
Thirteen ten.
I vote that we should pass the resolution.
Okay, James?
Joel Williams.
No.
Okay.
Wayne Cole?
Yes.
Jeremy Rack?
Yes.
Mary Jean Cregor, uh, Mitch Magnus?
No.
All right.
And Larry Phillips?
I'm, I have to abstain, I'm sorry. Okay.
Three and three.
Yes, it is three to three.
Three, three, Ms. Cartwright? Does that go to the mayor? Correct.
Resolution.
No, you're correct.
But let's review the resolution just to make sure, because it is council rule, not state law.
Help somebody speaks louder. I have to play this.
Section four, to pass an ordinance, resolution or motion that the mayor's vote is needed for passage. You may not vote unless it is for the purpose of.
Passage.
The resolution.
Yes.
We wish to state your intentions, if you already have.
Yes, I have to assume a tie goes to the no, it's not passed.
Doesn't meet the requirements for passage of a resolution.
Okay. Amy, interesting.
So, uh, the motion has failed. The motion to pass.
That's, that's how I read it, but is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, the motion has failed. Okay.
May I add one additional, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Uh, Wayne?
I still have one more. It's a consider amended alcohol ordinance, this is for discussion.
Okay, and I don't know if James wants to speak at this, but we have worked hard putting this together. We've all reviewed it many times, and, uh, down the road, I think we want to pass it. As a new ordinance for alcohol. And I think you all have a copy, we want you to study it, and I think it's just for information at this point, James, or is it? No, it is.
It is.
Information only. We want to address it in October. Because it would give us the opportunity to put it in effect January one, is that correct, James?
The, the intention was for, uh, the council to, uh, have input on. Uh, any new, uh, ordinance regarding alcohol being the legislative body.
Right, so we'll put it on the, uh, committee agenda next month.
Right.
Correct, okay. All right, um, we're down to citizen comments?
Parks and Rec.
Yeah, there you go, thank you, Liz. Uh, citizen comments?
The, the, uh, the only citizen comment that we have is from Paul Bodys.
Two?
Just Paul, Paul Bodie.
So, given the, the way of the evening, not gonna burden you with what I was looking to talk about. Uh, but I'll, I'll call you afterwards, you can, you can help me figure out how to do this decision, something that I think is serious, some people think is serious.
Uh, could you speak into the microphone?
So I, I both want, I just want to say one thing, I, I want to thank everybody, the doctors that came, it was a good debate. Uh, you did an excellent job of summarizing why, you know, why, why was one doctor? What kind of a message did that send to the community if we don't know the doctor? So, but so, I don't know the whole story, so.
Sure.
Yeah, but, but I will say this, uh, several people have, uh, several groups, uh, people from two groups, and, and other one coming, have joined together. To take a look at, uh, government, and, and you kind of know, we're starting here, but in the legislature. But I want to read something to you really quick, this is right out of Arkansas Code, twenty-five nineteen one oh two, the legislative intent of the void. It says it is vital that the electors shall be advised of the performance of public officials, that's why that code. Okay, so, so tonight, I intend to actually use this meeting tonight as a mentoring tool for the community. And how the deliberative process works, you discuss things, a couple of people got pulled, pulled out to, to the woodshed and the why. But you, you came back, okay?
Sure.
But there's a lot to be learned here, and, and we did discover something with the, of a financial concern that involves a river thing. Uh, and, and I want to discuss it with you and possibly David and Chuck, I think you left. But, uh, it, and it speaks to public records, so, but we'll talk about this, however, thank you again, uh.
Okay.
Good job, you guys are doing a great job with Creekside and, and electric vision. This community is under a lot of pressure, people coming in because of, are leaving the population centers. So we're gonna need more doctors, we're gonna need more facilities, more restaurants, and all that stuff, so that's a great vision, thank you very much.
Got you, thank you. Are you on there?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. That one subject matter, you know, we had to give a little on that. Okay, uh, down to mayor's comments, what a night, hey? Dr. Jackson? Let's, uh, let's keep it going, let's keep it positive, NARMC, we're behind you a hundred percent. And, uh, Baxter Health, we are, believe me. We know you're becoming a big player in the area, and we're gonna support that, but tonight, I'm glad that we supported NARMC. So, with that said, motion to adjourn? Okay, we're adjourned, thank you.